Good evening. We are ready to begin. This Planning Commission meeting is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open meeting law. We're live on KCL, Channel 2, and this meeting will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 a.m., the following Monday at midnight, and Tuesday at 5:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. Would everyone please stand for the pledge?
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Chair Moody?
Here.
Vice Chair Schlotman?
Present.
Commissioner Goings?
Present.
Commissioner Truesdale?
Present.
Commissioner Quinn?
Here.
Commissioner Flengus?
Excused.
Commissioner Bonar?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. I call your attention to the information printed in your agenda concerning our actions and the appeal and review process if appropriate. Please read this carefully, and if you have any questions, staff is available. Also, the second page of the agenda contains our rules of conduct, and we appreciate you adhering to these rules so we can run a smooth meeting. Thank you. Moving on to Section 4. This is the public comment portion. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium and give your name for the record. The amount of discussion, as well as the amount of time, if any, a single speaker is allowed, may be limited. All comments made under this item for specific action items will be cross-referenced to those items. Are there members of the public who wish to speak under this portion of the agenda? Seeing none, we will move on to Item 5. For possible action to approve the final minutes for the January 13, 2015, Planning Commission meetings, it is my understanding those meetings are not yet available, so is there a motion to obey those minutes?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to obey the meeting minutes to our next scheduled Planning Commission hearing on March 10.
Thank you, Commissioner. The motion is to obey the minutes of the January 13 meeting. That motion carries. Item 6. For possible action, any items from the Planning Commission staff and/or the applicant wish to be stricken or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time.
Mr. Chairman, the following items have been requested to be held in abeyance to the March 10, 2015 Planning Commission meeting. Items #23 through 26, VAR 57010, WVR 57009, WVR 57212, and TMP 57007. Items #27 through 30, VAR 57017, WVR 57018, WVR 57213, and TMP 57025. Items 36 and 37, SUP 57330 and 57331. Item #43, TXT 51723, as well as the following item has been requested to be stricken from the agenda, Item #44, TXT 57274. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and have a motion on those items.
Mr. Chairman, since those were public hearing items, we need to open the public hearing to see if anyone's here to speak on those items first.
Okay, thank you. Actually, then, we're going to include all of the housekeeping items. Besides these, are there any items that the commissioners, staff, or any applicants or members of the public would like to pull forward for action? Seeing none, does anyone wish to speak on any of the items that have been mentioned? Hearing none, Commissioner Schlotman, your motion on the housekeeping items, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, on Items 23 through 30, 36 and 37, and Item #43, I would make a motion holding abeyance until our next scheduled Plan Commission meeting on March 10, and move to strike Item #44.
Okay, thank you. Please vote. Please post. That motion carries. We are now on to the consent items. Consent items are considered routine by the Planning Commission and may be enacted by one motion. However, any item may be discussed if a commission member or applicant so desires. Any discussion on any of the consent items? Seeing none, let's have a motion on the consent items, please.
Mr. Chairman, on Items 7 through 9, the consent items, I would move to approve following staff's recommendation and for approval and conditions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please vote. Please post. That motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, Items 7 and 8 are final action unless appealed to the City Clerk's office within 10 days. Item 9 is final action unless appealed to the City Clerk's office within seven days.
Thank you. Moving on to one motion, one vote. The following items that may be considered in one motion, the following are items that may be considered in one motion, one vote. They are considered routine, non-public, and public hearing items. All public hearings and non-public hearings will be opened at one time. Any person representing an application, or a member of the public, or a member of the Planning Commission not in agreement with the conditions and all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff should request to have that item removed from this part of the agenda. Beginning with Item 10, SUP 55880, the applicant is Vegas Market &amp; Liquor. The owner is Friendly Bear Plaza, LLC. For possible action on a request for special use permit for a proposed 3,600 square-foot retail establishment with accessory package liquor off-sale use within a proposed general retail store other than listed at 861 North Nellis Boulevard, Suite 2, in Ward 3. Item 11, SUP 57326, the applicant owner is Harrison Properties Limited. For possible action on a request for special use permit for a proposed 1,152 square-foot tavern limited establishment use, ground level, at 725, 729, and 731 South Las Vegas Boulevard, in Ward 3. You know, I forgot to read in staff's recommendation for approval on Item 10. Staff recommends approval on Item 11. And moving on to related Item 12, SUP 57327, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed 864 square-foot tavern limited establishment use with 288 square feet of outdoor seating area, second level. This is in Ward 3. Staff recommends approval. Item 13, SUP 57229, the applicant is Helen Mangaki. The owner is Jerry R. and Gladys R. Jacks. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed beer wine cooler on sale establishment within an existing 1,986 square-foot restaurant with a 372 square-foot outdoor patio at 9320 Sun City Boulevard, Suite 101, in Ward 4. Staff recommends approval. Item 14, SUP 57279, the applicant is Park on Fremont, LLC. The owner is Artemis W. Hamm III. For possible action on a request for a major amendment to a previously approved special use permit, that is SUP 45934, for a proposed 7,848 square-foot expansion to an existing 3,165 square-foot tavern limited establishment at 506 Fremont Street, in Ward 3. Staff recommends approval. Item 15, ROC 57271, the applicant owner is Rhineland Homes Nevada, LLC. For possible action on a request for a review of condition of an approved site development plan review, SDR 48862, to amend that portion of Condition #10 that states, quote, "The setbacks for this development shall be a minimum of 18 feet to the front of the house," unquote, to, quote, "The setbacks for this development shall be 14 feet to the front of the house," unquote, at the southeast corner of Elkhorn Road and Sky Point Drive, in Ward 6. Staff recommends approval. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on any of these items? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment, open this for discussion among the Planning Commission.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to pull Item #10.
Okay, any others? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion on the one motion, one vote items.
Mr. Chairman, on the one motion, one vote items, Items 11, 12, 13, 14, and 15, I would move to approve, following staff's recommendation of approval, subject to all conditions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please post, thank you. That motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, Items 11, 12, 13, 14, and 15 are all final action unless appealed to the City Clerk's office within 10 days.
Thank you, Director. Okay, we're moving on to the public hearing items. We're going to begin with-
Mr. Chairman, before you go forward, can we go back to Item 9 in the consent agenda?
Certainly.
I'd like to re-vote on that one, because I need to make a disclosure.
Okay, so we are moving back to the consent items.
Just go ahead and, Mr. Chairman, if you could just go ahead and rescind your vote on Item 9, and then you'll do a re-vote.
Move to rescind the vote on Item 9.
Or move to rescind the vote on Item 9.
Okay, that vote, that motion is made. Please vote. Please post. That motion to rescind Item 9 carries.
With regards to Item 9, I believe my office has a arrangement or a transaction going forward with Howard Hughes Company, and I'm not 100% sure, but in the abundance of caution, I would like to abstain on this matter.
Okay, thank you. So what we're going to do now, we're going to make Item 9 a public hearing item. Let me read that into the record. TMP 57325, the applicant owner is Howard Hughes Company, LLC. For possible action on a request for a tentative map for a 22-parcel master plan village at the southwest corner of Alta Drive and Sky Vista Drive, in Ward 2. Staff recommends approval. Do we need a staff report, or can we go ahead and make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, you can just ask for the public comment. If there's none, then you can just go ahead and vote.
Okay, thank you. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment. Is there any discussion among the Planning Commissioners? Seeing none, let's have a motion on Item 9, please.
Mr. Chairman, Item #9, TMP 57325, would make a motion to follow staff's recommendation of approval, subject to all conditions.
Thank you. Please vote. Please post. That motion carries, noting the abstention of Commissioner Truesdale. Now, we're going to start with Item 10. This was an abeyance, SUP 55880. The applicant is Vegas Market &amp; Liquor. The owner is Friendly Bear Plaza, LLC. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed 3,600 square-foot retail establishment with accessory package liquor off-sale use within a proposed general retail store other than listed at 861 North Nellis Boulevard, Suite 2, in Ward 3. Staff recommends approval. Good evening.
Good evening.
Oh, thank you. Staff report.
Mr. Chairman, this item was held in abeyance at the January 13 Planning Commission meeting so as to afford the applicant the opportunity to hold a neighborhood meeting. Since that time, the applicant has not held a neighborhood meeting. Regarding the application, the applicant is requesting 143 square feet of floor space to be dedicated to the sale of alcohol beverages, which represents less than 10% of the 2,505 square feet of total retail floor area. The proposed use meets all minimum special use permit requirements and is not within 400 feet of any protected use. As such, staff recommends approval with conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Please introduce yourself and state your address.
Good evening. My name's Dave Edder, 777 East Quartz Avenue, Sandy Valley, Nevada. With me today is the applicant, Nada Hamika, and then her brother also, who is her advisor and helps her through some business transactions. The reason why we did not hold the neighborhood meeting, we had some issues that came about with the landlord. Those were not resolved until yesterday afternoon. We did not know if we were going to have a lease to be able to continue to move forward, so at that point, there was no reason to do a neighborhood meeting if we weren't going to have a lease. That has been resolved. We now have a lease. Unfortunately, we didn't have enough time to resolve that, take care of the neighborhood meeting.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard on this? Your name and address, please.
Nada Hamika. I'm the one who is interested in opening this, starting this business.
I need your address, please.
It's 5773 Dulmest Lane, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89110.
Okay, do you have anything to add that Mr. Edder hasn't covered?
No, I think he said everything that I wanted to be said. I don't know about my brother.
Sorry, you need to speak into the microphone. We're having a hard time hearing you.
I think he said everything that I really wanted to say.
Okay.
So, so I-
Thank you.
If you want to add something.
Yeah, I just wanted to say I'm her brother.
Need your name and address, please.
Basil Hamika, and my address is 5052 Mountain Folies Drive. When she, I was trying to help her out with the location, and we did our research and made sure that everything applies to zoning, and she was within range and everything as far as distance-wise, and everything was cleared. So she went through the expense trying to go through this process, because she, her idea was, she looked at other locations, but she knew it wasn't suitable and wasn't going to be approved by planning based on the distancing and so on. Well, this one sounds to be completely clear and had no issues. And we had some prior issues about some kind of religious group that they were objecting it, and then it was clarified. So then, then she was hoping that to be, to get approved for, she feels that she should, she has no other issues in here other than, might be some personal issues, you know, so that's all.
Thank you very much. Does anyone else wish to speak for or against this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment and open this for discussion with the Planning Commissioners. Commissioner Schlotman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, my position stands. Seventeen people opposed to it in your neighborhood, and I asked you to have the neighborhood meeting. You didn't have the neighborhood meeting because you didn't know if you're going to have a lease or not have a lease. You know, if you're working through those issues, you should have carried through with what you said you're going to do at the last Planning Commission hearing. I don't know what to say. I mean, do we, do I vote this down, or do I hold them in abeyance again? I'm not sure. I'll see if my other fellow commissioners have any comments.
Commissioner, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have the same concern, too. I mean, we came last week, we said, our last meeting, we said have the neighborhood meeting. Whether the lease was signed or not, the whole purpose of the neighborhood meeting is to let the neighbors know. Now, you're sitting there, the brother, saying that, well, this is all ready to go. Well, we just don't ram it down people's throats. There's 17 people in your neighborhood that want to talk to you about this, and you need to sit down and talk to them before you're going to get my support. You know, whether it's one or 100, I want to hear what the neighbors say, and I have about 15 that I can see right here that are in opposition to your project. So there are some issues there that you guys need to sit and talk with the neighbors about. You have to speak through the chairman.
Hang on, we're just discussing this now as Planning Commissioners. Public comment is closed.
Did, is there, was public hearing opened up? Oh, okay. I didn't know if there were all these people here that want to speak on this. I was, I didn't see anybody come down.
No, there were none who chose to speak on this item, other than the three that we heard from. Any other commissioners wish to be heard? What's, what's your motion, Commissioner?
We can give you one more opportunity to go back and hold this public hearing, or if you don't want to have this public hearing, we can go ahead and vote on it today. I'll ask the applicant what they would like to do.
Go ahead and vote, please.
Go ahead and vote. Okay.
So let me just make it clear. You're choosing to ask us to vote yes or no on this rather than agree to obey this for one month so that you can have a neighborhood meeting?
Yes.
And this may go to City Council, and then they can make the final decision.
Okay, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, on Item #10, I would make a motion for denial based on the applicant not following through with the things that we've asked him to do previously. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Please vote. And recognize that a yes vote is for denial on Item 10. Please post. That motion carries. Item 10 is denied.
Mr. Chairman, Item 10 will be heard at City Council on March 18, 2015. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We are now at Item 16. This was an abeyance, GPA 57033. The applicant is Mosaic Land 1, LLC, and the owner is SIC Nevada 1, LLC, at Al. For possible action on a request for a general plan amendment from PCD, Planned Community Development, to medium-low density residential on the south side of Deer Springs Way, approximately 285 feet east of Walupi Way, in Ward 6. Staff recommends approval. Please have staff's report.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is requesting to remove 10.42 gross acres of undeveloped land from an approved Providence Square Master Plan in order to establish residential uses on the site where commercial uses are currently planned. If approved, the site could accommodate up to 8.4 dwelling units per acre and allow for westward growth of the existing single-family detached development to the east. Approval of the requested general plan amendment would establish a consistent pattern of moderate-density residential development along the south side of Deer Springs Way, and staff recommends approval. Thank you.
Thank you. We hear from the applicant.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Planning Commissioners. My name is Tony Celeste, address 8345 West Sunset Road, here on behalf of the applicant, and also pitch-hitting tonight for my colleague Bob Groenhour. We appreciate staff's recommendation of approval. As you can see, the subject property is about 10 and 1/2 undeveloped acres near Walupi and Deer Springs, just north of 215. What this request is, is actually to take it out of the Providence Square Master Plan and redesignate it under general plan amendment to the medium-low residential master plan. We will be coming in back before you with the zone change so that you would see what type of zoning and density we would be going for at that point in time. It is compatible to our neighbors just to the east, at least as far as the master plan designation. Of course, we would work closely with Councilman Ross's office as we move forward on designs and zoning. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have, and appreciate staff's recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Do any members of the public wish to be heard for or against this item? Seeing none, I will close the public comment and open this for discussion with the Planning Commission.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Truesdale.
I think this whole area's been before us on multiple agenda items, and this is in keeping with what has been presented previously, and as long as they have to come back in for their final site plan, if there are no objections, I'd make a motion for approval.
Okay. I don't think anyone else wishes to speak on this, so the motion is for approval on Item 16. Please vote. Please post. Motion carries.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, Item 16 will be heard at the March 18, 2015 City Council meeting.
Thank you. Items 17, 18, and 19 are related. These were previously obeyed, beginning with Item 17, VAR 56177. The applicant owner is Gerdwara Baba Deep Singh, Inc. For possible action on a request for a variance to allow a residential adjacency setback of 40 feet or a minimum of 105 feet as required at 6341 West Lone Mountain Road, in Ward 4. Item 18, SUP 56178, for possible action on a request for a major amendment to a previously approved special use permit, U-0139-98, for a proposed 15,772 square-foot expansion to an existing 3,882 square-foot house of worship use, also in Ward 4. And then finally, Item 19, SDR 56179, for possible action on a request for a major amendment to a previously approved plot, plan review, U-0139-98, for a proposed 15,772 square-foot expansion to an existing 3,882 square-foot house of worship building in Ward 4. Staff recommends denial on all three items. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, this item was held in abeyance in order to host a neighborhood meeting. At the meeting, the neighbors expressed concerns about traffic impacts, building heights, and parking. The proposed expansion of the primary building complies with all minimum code requirements with the exception of residential adjacency standards, which is subject variance that's before you. As proposed, the 35-foot tall building would require 105-foot setback to the nearest property line, and as described on the site plan, that setback is requested to be 40 feet. Staff finds that to be a self-imposed hardship and is recommending denial of the variance, and as such, subsequently, the site plan review. Please note, we have received additional letters of protest since publication.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, gentlemen. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mr., I'm sorry, and members of the commission. My name is Jaspol Sidhu, 6283 Dean Martin Drive, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89118. I'm the project architect and engineer on this project, and this application is for the house of worship, which are the existing house of worship, and we are making the extension to the building. That existing building was done like 14 years ago, and there's new members into the community, and so they need a bigger building. We held a public neighborhood meeting, and a lot of neighbors came up, and there were a few concerns. We talked to them. They were very much satisfied, and we will be here to answer any other questions you might have here.
Okay, thank you. Sir?
Overpender, Chima 3067, Palisgate Court, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89117. Thank you.
Do any members of the public wish to speak for or against this item? Seeing none, I will close the public comment and open this for discussion with the Planning Commissioner Bonar?
If my may ask the applicant through you, Commissioner, this is a long, single building, and if I'm not mistaken, you have all but one parcel on both sides of you. And I'm wondering if you've done a longer-range plan as to how the whole site might be used of the property you own. And if there is an intent to put some of it to use, how would you know if this existing building that you're saving and expanding would not be in the way of what looks better in the long-range plan?
Would one of you like to respond to that question?
Yes, that was a concern of ours, and we held a meeting with all of our congregation members. And we all, due to our budget and what we decided was, that this particular plan suits our needs much better than potentially using the back or going in the back. And we had extensive conversations on this, and this was the general consensus.
Pause for now.
Commissioner Slottman.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, through you, question for the applicant. It looks like you're putting many millions of dollars into this facility, and it's beautiful. But why do you choose to leave this modular building at the back of your project? Why couldn't you get rid of this and incorporate it into your building somehow?
That modular building is going to be just until the construction is done to this building, and then we're going to remove it.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, through you, question for staff. Is that something that we can condition, we're not approving that modular building? Because I thought we were approving that.
That's the current request, but you could condition for its removal upon issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the church itself.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Question for the applicant, would you be willing to agree to then add a condition to remove that trailer at the completion of construction of this new structure?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, and I have a question for staff. Would that be on item 19 on the SDR?
That's correct.
Thank you. Commissioner Truesdale.
Through you, for staff. Is the setback requirement, or request, or requirement, I guess, in place based on the architectural embellishment of the building? Or is it just the, because it appears to be one-story, generally one-story or mezzanine space inside. So I'm trying to find out if it's, if the whole building triggers that or just the embellishment?
The embellishment does not. Church steeples and minarets do not count towards that. What is the residential adjacency issue is the 35-foot maximum height of the building. As you know, if this was a single-family home, 35 feet is allowed in single-family development. So they meet that, but as it is commercial property, that's the part they're not meeting. The minarets are exempt from the residential adjacency.
Now, if, if the applicant owns the property around there, is it, could they have come in for a master plan that would have done away with this? Except for the one parcel?
Well, the variance is, is from the parcel that they don't control, I believe. That's where it is, that's where the single-family home is privately owned, and that's where the residential adjacency.
Which that parcel is the?
To the east and to the west.
Yes, east and west. It's on both sides.
We do have the written support letter from both of these neighbors, and we turned those in, in the last meeting.
Okay, so for staff again. They have the support letter. There's another church, I believe, east of that parcel, that RE parcel, right?
That is correct.
And they're setting north, towards the front of the property. I, I don't, I'm not sure how, if the people that are most affected by it are in support of it. I'm not sure how the harm is created other than it's an architectural building that represents a grand church or a house of worship. But I think they, they have reached out to the neighbors. We typically give a little more latitude for the church buildings or house of worship buildings. They tend to be, the design seems to tie to the secular nature of the church or the house of worship. I could support this item if they had, if they submitted the right, the letters saying that the adjacent property owner, residential property owner doesn't have an objection.
And as the applicant indicated, they did submit those letters from the adjoining properties at the previous planning commission meeting.
Because I mean, this is kind of what the Lone Mountain Baptist, I guess, or the mega church that's east of there?
Uh, yes, you can see that on your, your display.
Came in and, you know, like a thousand cuts back when Mr. Klappsettle was. But, so I, I guess I don't have a problem supporting the church.
Thank you.
I think staff addressed all the concerns, but I think the applicant has reached out to the neighbors appropriately, and so.
Anyone else wish to be heard on this? All right, let's have a motion.
Okay, if there are no objections, I would move for, with regard to item 17, abeyance VAR 56177, move for approval. Subject all staffs as if approved conditions.
Motion is to approve item 17. Please vote. Please post. That motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I wanted to change my vote on that to a, to a no vote.
Okay.
Thank you.
That motion still carries with two no votes, one of which is Commissioner Goins.
With regards to item 18, abeyance SUP 56178, move to follow staffs as if approved conditions.
Mr. Chairman, before we vote on that, question for the motion maker. Would that be with the added condition that the applicant agreed to with removing the modular structure after the completion, construction of the improvements?
Yes, yes.
It's actually my understanding that the conditions on the following item.
It's on the site plan on the following.
Yeah.
Okay, so the motion is for approval of item 18.
Okay, the motion is to approve item 18. Please vote. Please post. That motion carries. Item 19.
With regards to item 19, abeyance SDR 56179, motions for approval subject to all staffs as if approved conditions, with the added condition that the modular building shall be removed within 30 days of completion of construction. Or certificate of occupancy.
Thank you. The motion, the motion is to approve item 19 with the added condition as stated. Please vote. Please post. That motion does not carry.
No, excuse me. We can re-vote that. I'm going to change my vote, or change my vote to. No, I'm voting for it.
Your vote is in favor.
Yeah.
So with, with that motion not carrying, that item will go forward to city council with no recommendation? Or should we ask for an alternative vote first?
No, it's a.
It's fine. Okay. Item 19 does not carry, and so that item will go forward to city council without a recommendation from the planning commission.
Mr. Chairman, in that case, items 17, 18, and 19 will all be heard at the city council meeting on March 18th, 2015.
Okay, thank you, Director. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Moving on to related items 20, 21, and 22. Item 20 VAR 56867. The applicant is Motion Properties. The owner is Vegas Valley Land Enterprise LLC and Decisive Pursuit LLC. For possible action on a request for a variance to allow a 1.13 connectivity ratio, where 1.30 is the minimum required at the northeast corner of Rainbow Boulevard and El Campo Grande Avenue in Ward Six. Staff recommends approval. Item 21 WVR 56868, for possible action on a request for a waiver to allow a 40-foot wide, to allow 40-foot wide private streets without sidewalks in a gated development where 47-foot wide private streets with five-foot wide sidewalks are required in Ward Six. Staff recommends approval. And then item 29 TMP 56869, for possible action on a request for a tentative map for a 33-lot residential subdivision in Ward Six. Staff recommends approval. Can we please have staff, the staff report?
Mr. Chairman, the site is of an irregular rectangle shape, making the layout of the site challenging. This proposed tentative map would require a variance to allow for a 1.1 connectivity ratio and a waiver to allow a 40-foot wide streets without sidewalks inside the gated community. The development supports the 2020 Master Plan Newly Developing Areas Policy 3.21, which states rural preservation neighborhoods as defined in the state in that of the afforded the required transitional buffers where such portions of the required buffer area fall within the city of Las Vegas. This is to be accomplished by having larger lots up to 15,000 square feet in area buffering the existing residential to the north. Staff recommends approval of all three applications as the unique shape of the parcels justifies the requested variance and waiver, and the subdivision designed properly addresses the transition of residential density. Please note that additional letters of protest have been received after the publishing. Thank you.
Thank you. Could we please hear from the applicant?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, planning commissioners. My name is Tony Celeste, address 8345 West Sunset Road, here on behalf of the applicant and property owner. As staff just read in, our site is approximately 11 and a half acres undeveloped. Basically a fill-in, as you can see from the aerial there. It is located on the northeast corner of Rainbow and El Campo Grande. Before I get into too much of the specific applications tonight, just I want to give a brief procedural history of how we got here. As this board may recall, about two and a half years ago, the prior property owner came before this board requesting a zone change to R1. This board ultimately did make that recommendation to city council, and city council in the summer of 2012 did approve it to the R1 zoning, which, as you can see, is in place today. And it is with that that we are basing our design off of is that zone change. During that approval to the R1 zoning, it was strongly suggested that a maximum of 33 lots be placed on this site. Later that year, in, in the fall, a, the property owner submitted a tentative map, which did show the 13 lots. And this is the tentative map right here that I will show you on the screen there that was submitted in the fall of 2012. It is the 33 lots. As you can see, that application that was submitted, which was ultimately withdrawn, so this board did not review it or approve of it, but it was nonetheless a submittal. As you can see, it provided access off of Rainbow with an, with, off of Rainbow with an over-length cul-de-sac in which 20 lots would be located in there. And then 13 additional lots would be fronting directly onto El Campo Grande. That application, as I said, was ultimately withdrawn. My client subsequently purchased this property with the R1 underlying zoning. We are coming in today with a site plan or tentative map, as you can see here. Adhering to that strong recommendation at this board, as well as the city council, made maximum of 33 lots. We believe that this design is a better fit with the neighborhood. It provides one cohesive community instead of a over-length cul-de-sac with 20 lots off of Rainbow and then one, or then 13 homes directly accessing El Campo Grande. As you can see, what we've done here is that we have taken access off of El Campo Grande with the Gilbert alignment, and now have all 33 lots internal to our site. In addition to that, as you can see, you can kind of compare and contrast. We have been able to be more sensitive to our neighbors to the north. We are only providing nine lots to those neighbors to the north as opposed to their 13. So from that perspective, we are a little bit less dense than our neighbors to the north. As you can see, the prior tentative map that was submitted, it matched up lot to lot for the 13 lots. So we think this site plan is, is a better fit. Additionally, with this being R1, as this board knows, the, the minimum lot size could actually be 6,500 square feet. And that, I want to stress, is not our intention here. Actually, our smallest lot size is just under 7,900 square feet. We do have a couple of 15,000-square-foot lots, as was indicated by staff. We did have a neighborhood meeting last week. Approximately 30 of our, of our neighbors attended, and they had some very good suggestions and recommendations, which I'm pleased to report that we have been able to incorporate some of those suggestions. There was essentially three issues that they had brought up. Single-story versus two-story, a side yard setback, and then the grading and drainage. So I'll, I'll address each one separately at this point. First, with respect to the single-story versus two-story. As I told the neighborhood and the neighbors, it is certainly the developer's preference to do single-story over two-story. But nonetheless, the developer does like to have his options. I told the neighbors that I would let them know as far as what we felt we could do with the single versus two-story. I did report back to the neighbors last Friday that I would request that this commission recommend approval for single, a single story only on the nine lots that are to the north. And those specific lots are lots eight, nine, 10, 11, 13, 14, 18, 19, and 24. So they, there are these nine lots right here, which are adjacent to all single-story homes right there. So we've agreed to match that condition. The second one was the side yard setback. In order to make our property a little bit less dense as far as the unit count to unit count, the way we're in order to get, to get nine homes adjacent to the 13 is that we side-loaded five of our, five of our lots. As you can see, these lots 13, 14, 18, 19, and 24 are side-loaded. So the concern expressed by the neighbors, well, in an R1, you can actually have a side yard setback on the northern property line as minimal as five feet. And so we went back, we looked at the potential footprints of the homes, and we were able to agree to a condition, which I have let the neighbors know, that for lots 13, 14, 18, 19, and 24, that along the northern property line there, that we could actually increase that side yard setback from five feet to 10 feet. The, the final issue that was brought to our attention was concerns regarding grading and drainage. I let the neighbors know that the grading, we believe, speaking to our engineer, is going to essentially be very close to matching the existing grading to the ambiance neighborhood just to the north. It may vary from 12, 12 inches to 18 inches, but we're going to be very close to what their grading is. The second part was what kind of impact will that have on drainage? There's a specific condition, I believe it's condition number 16, very standard condition, that says we need to submit a drainage study, a technical study to your public works. And if we cannot satisfy that study, no permits will be issued. I explained that to the residents as well, to try to tell them what we would do regarding drainage. So with respect to those two conditions, I would just reiterate, I've given a copy to, or I believe the city clerk does have a copy. But those two conditions I would like to be added to the tentative map application, which would be item 22. And they would specifically read, the first condition, lots eight, nine, 10, 11, 13, 14, 18, 19, and 24 shall be limited to single-story. And then the second condition I would like this board to consider and then impose on the tentative map would be lots 13, 14, 18, 19, and 24 shall have a minimum side yard setback of 10 feet along the northern property line. I do know there's, I see a few of my neighbors here. I appreciate their time and consideration last week in meeting with us. They had some very great suggestions and inputs, and I'm glad that my client was able to incorporate many of those suggestions. And I'd like to hear from them and then reserve any time to address any additional questions they may have or this board may have.
Thank you, Mr. Celeste. I get an idea. How many of you are here to speak for or against this item? Approximately 10, 10 of you? Two of you are together? All right. Okay. Oh, you're speaking, the two of you are speaking for everyone. I'm not going to limit your time then, so come on up. Come on up to the podium. Oh, yeah, this is now open for a public hearing. Please state your name and address.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. My name is Mark Parsons, 6796 Bastille Avenue, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89130. I'm on the HOA Board of Ambiance Estates, which is the, the houses that border to the north. I'm on the HOA Board of Ambiance Estates, which is the houses that border to the north. I'd like to thank Mr. Celeste, first of all, for having the neighborhood meeting. It was a good constructive meeting. There was quite a few people there, not only from ambiance, but from the neighboring communities. And at that point, we all got up and had our say, and everybody had their points of view. I would like to say, as far as ambiance goes, I did kind of a straw poll talking within the last week of the neighbors there, and everybody in ambiance seems to think that these conditions that he stated, as long as they stay that way, are acceptable with most of people in ambiance. I can tell you right now that that section of land is an eyesore. It's humped up with mounds and mounds of dirt that the city put there, I believe, when they did Rainbow. It has two vacant houses that transients have been living in, in and out of. Occasionally, we'll have police go there. The fences are being torn up and down. We've got guys riding motorcycles in and out of there, but it's pretty unsightly. Personally, I'd just like to say, as far as my personal attitude is, when somebody drives by that neighborhood and they want to come into my neighborhood, and if I have my house for sale and I want to keep my land value up, I'd like to see somebody drive by a gated community where the houses are 2,600 to 3,500 square feet, a gated community. I'd rather have them drive by that, come into my house if I'm trying to sell my property, and I believe the other landlords need to think about that, too, and develop this piece of property. It's been that way for too long. It's a dust hazard. And that's my opinion, and I kind of speak, I think, for the majority of the people in ambiance. Not all of them are here tonight, though I did speak to quite a few today.
Great. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Hello, Commissioner. My name is Darren Greer. I live at 6727 Alpine Brooks. I directly, I'm a directly adjacent property to the north of them, and I too agree, Mr. Celeste has put forth exactly what we requested, the five, or the nine lots bordering us being single-story, the five side-loaded lots being with a 10-foot minimum setback, and all that to be read and written into the conditions of approval. For the most part, all the neighbors I've spoke to would be good with that. So we'd be very happy to have some houses to our south.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to be heard on this? Please, sir, come on up. And if anyone else wishes to be heard, we'd ask you to come up and be by the microphone. Good evening. Please state your name and address.
My name is Larry Low. I'm from 6647 Alpine Brooks. We border on the north. We also agree, my wife and I also agree, as to the first two terms. Our concern is the third term, and that's the height of the elevation of the properties to our south. Number one, on our properties near there, everything drains that way typically, but they have been placed with hundreds of mounds of dirt. And when they're grading, if they grade that elevation higher than our lots, we have concern about drainage. The other thing would be naturally, the wall height. If they're going to use our existing walls as their northern border, there are people that have swimming pools along that line, and there's a certain minimum height for insurance purposes, for sure, to have around a swimming pool. And if you don't have that, then you've got insurance problems, so you've got to build a wall higher. That's why we were asking for grading that was at or below our current elevation for the drainage and for that protection.
Thank you, Mr. Low. Okay. Seeing no one else that wishes to speak on this, I'll close the public comment and open this for discussion with the planning commission.
I just would like to make a quick comment. I met with Mr. Celeste for lunch, and I think it's a great project, and it's going to be great for this neighborhood, but any neighborhood without sidewalks just does not sit well with me, and I just wanted to put that on the record because, you know, a neighborhood without sidewalks is a neighborhood without sidewalks. So, thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Quinn. Commissioner Bonner.
Yeah, I think the success of this project relies on there not being the two-foot, five, two-five-foot sidewalks on both sides of the road, and I agree with that. This is a self-contained community where we don't need through traffic on the sidewalks. So that's a commendation for the design. But based on that third condition, I'd like to amplify that and find a way if staff can help me get an additional condition that would say to absolutely meet the adjacent grades of the properties to the north, even if it requires taking fill off the site. Most people like to balance, their engineers don't like to pay the cost of removing excess. So if this could be stated in a way that the north property line absolutely matched the properties to the north, and that any excess fill generated be taken away from the site to meet that objective.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, through you. Typically, the walls aren't something that Public Works gets involved in, but I will speak just from the engineering side. It would be difficult for them to exactly match the, you know, they have different lots along their borders, so it'd be hard to exactly match. If you wanted to have a condition that set a tolerance that they were within, like they had mentioned, 12 inches or 18 inches of the existing pad elevation of the adjacent lots, they could probably agree to that. But from the drainage standpoint, just looking at the site, we know that all the lots are going to drain to the streets, and the streets are probably going to drain out to Rebecca. We can just start looking at the layout, and like you said, they have to do a study, so we know that we're not going to allow any flooding to adjacent neighbors, anything like that. But I'm not sure what we can do for a condition with the walls.
Commissioner Bonner.
Relating back to that, though, with the privacy factor of the height of the walls, whether or not there are swimming pools, can one of the options be to put wrought iron fencing on top of the existing demise wall to make that swimming ordinance compliant?
If I may jump in there, that would then cause us to deal with a private owner who may not want us to encroach on their property. So that, I respectfully think we're now getting out of the public portion into some private agreements.
I understand.
Is my take on that.
All right, retract that.
Commissioner Slotman.
Yes, Chairman, through you, a couple of comments about this. Just looking at the grading plan, it looks like the neighboring property is a little bit higher than this property, not by much, 12 inches to two feet higher. I think one of the main things is, from my experience in developing, once we get through that technical drainage study, and it's really hard for us to determine today what all the lots will be in the future, once we start designing the whole drainage study. If, for whatever reason, this site had to be built up a bit, which I mean, it doesn't look like it will have to, if they end up posing any pressures up against the fence, then this developer would be required to pull it down and put up a retaining wall to retain that dirt. So, but it doesn't look like that's probably going to happen. I can't say. That's something that's going to have to be worked out with Public Works and the drainage people and that technical drainage study. But when you were talking about the lots with the added condition, it's lots 13, 14, 18, 19, and 24, is that correct?
Yes, so with specifically relating to lots 13, 14, 18, 19, and 24, those are the side-loaded lots where we'd have the 10-foot minimum side yard setback along the northern property line instead of the minimum five. And those would also be single-story as well.
Okay. Thank you. No further questions.
Commissioner Truesdale.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank Mr. Celeste for working with the neighbors. This is a very difficult site, and obviously, your meeting went well. You've got neighborhood support with some conditions. I think staff is, you know, going to have to be the ones that are the caretaker of the technical drainage and make sure that, as Public Works said, you know, the property drains off-site into a public right-of-way. So with that, I would move for approval of item 20.
Just before you vote, can I make just a few comments?
Sure.
And then I'll turn it back over to you. I also want to thank the applicant as well as the neighbors. Because this is a unique property, I really appreciate everyone coming together and reaching a compromise that most everybody, it sounds, is happy with. I love the idea of agreeing to the single-story and the setbacks. I too think it's a little premature to be talking about, you know, what we're going to do with elevations before we get a drainage study on this. I also know that there were some concerns about traffic, but after speaking with staff, I think we've got the right ingress and egress to this development where it is, and so you will see my support on this. And thank you, Commissioner Truesdale. Back to you.
All right, Chairman. With regards to Ambiance VAR 56867, move for approval following staff's recommendations.
Motion is for approval of item 20. Please vote. Please post. That motion carries.
With regard to item 21, waiver 56868, move to follow staff's recommendations for approval.
Thank you. Please vote. Please post. That motion also carries.
With respect to TMP 56869, move for staff, to follow staff's recommendation for approval with the added conditions representing the homes along the north property line to be, as the applicant submitted, single-story. The lots, specific lots, the 13, 14, 18, 19, and 24, a minimum of a 10-foot side yard setback, and that the grades that will wind up in the, you know, as per the technical drainage study, will be within that tolerance that staff and the applicant mentioned of 12 to 18 inches. That's my motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure we need that condition, but I leave it to your guys' discretion if you think it needs to be added, like we mentioned.
Well, I would, I think the technical drainage study is appropriate, but as long as you understand the intent of the commission, we're good.
So will the condition state the intent, or will it be a requirement?
The intended, because I don't know what the drainage study, it may be something less or greater, you know, just, but it's still going to address the concerns that they committed to the neighbors. So I would, you know, move to follow the grades of the technical drainage study.
Okay. Thank you.
And may I just, one clarification on the, I believe it's, the way it's been submitted to the city clerk is accurate, but just for the side-loaded 10-yard, 10-foot side yard setback that is just along the northern property line, that it's not the southern property line also.
Right.
We'll meet minimum code. Thank you.
Thank you. That's a good clarification.
Thank you.
Okay. Please vote on item 22 with the conditions as stated. Please post. That motion also carries. Item 22 is approved.
Thank you, commissioners, and I do appreciate our neighbors participating in this and helping us, I think, get to an even better project, and we look forward to moving on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, items 20, 21, and 22 are final action unless appealed to the city clerk's office within 10 days.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sliding down to items, related items, 31, 32, and 33, beginning with item 31. VAR 57283, the applicant is Jacob Giongian. The owner is Diamond Creek Holdings LLC and Charleston LLC. For possible action on a request for a variance to allow 121 parking spaces or 161 spaces are required at 6901 to 6905 West Charleston Boulevard in Ward 1. Staff recommends denial. Item 32, SUP 57286, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed 19,040-square-foot auto repair garage, major, within a waiver to allow the use to be adjacent to property zoned RE, Residence Estates, and R1, Single Family Residential, in Ward 1. Staff recommends denial. Finally, item 33, SDR 57287, for possible action on a request for a major amendment to an approved plot plan review at Z0050-87 to restripe a parking lot with waivers to allow a 0-foot landscape buffer along a portion of the east perimeter where a 3-foot buffer is required and a 0-foot buffer along a portion of the southern perimeter where a 6-foot buffer is required in Ward 1. Staff recommends denial. Could we please hear the staff report?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant has requested a major amendment to the previously approved plot plan in order to restripe the existing parking lot and is requesting a waiver to allow a 0-foot landscape buffer along a portion of the eastern property line where 3 feet is required and 0-foot landscape buffer along a portion of the southern perimeter where 6 feet is required. This request has been made by the applicant as previously approved, and constructed landscape buffers and materials have been removed from the site since the original approval. The proposed 19,000-square-foot auto garage, major use, intends to provide the required parking, which would require 161 spaces, but only 121 are being provided. The proposed variance staff finds is self-imposed, the proposed development is too intense for the site to accommodate. As such, staff is recommending denial of the variance and the associated site plan review. Please note, we have received additional letters of protest since publication.
Thank you. Good evening. Your name and address, please.
Evan Boss. I'm an architect at 2255 Galendo Court in Henderson, Nevada. I'll tell you briefly about the project. This is a really great choice for this building, which has been vacant for many years. It was approved for the same use back in 2003, and that owner pulled out. Subsequently, the building's been vacant, it's had a lot of transient issues. Subsequently, it was purchased and cleaned up quite a bit, and it's now just sort of gated off and remains vacant, and still has some problems with transient folks stopping by. So my client approached to do an auto body or collision center. He also caters to just mostly high-end cars and has several relationships with some of the dealers in town to do auto body repair on, like I say, mostly luxury-type vehicles. It's a perfect use for the site. It's basically a warehouse-shaped building, and it's not going to go retail, it's not going to go office, so we feel like it's a great match. Since we began, the suggestion was made by city councilperson to speak with the neighbors adjacent to the south about any concerns they may have. What arose from that was a request that we just finalized on Friday to do some planting along the south. So the request for that landscape buffer, we'd like to go ahead and do that one, and that is here. Well, I'm sorry. Owner corrected me on that. It's here with pine trees. Also, what I'm pointing to here is additional screening, because at some point, the owner will need to bring in a recycle bin for recycled metals, and that won't happen at the start, but the owner, as well as the homeowners to the south, agreed that by providing a fence and screening there, that it would not, it'd be a non-issue. There's an easement, like a drive-type, I don't know what you, best way to describe it, but it's the width of a road to the south, and then there's two large estate-type homes to the south. And they submitted to the city councilperson that they agreed with our layout that you see here, and so we'd like to enter that into the record tonight if possible. I'm also here with the owner, Jacob, and we'd love, you know, any questions you may have.
Okay. Thank you.
My name is Jacob Giongian. I live in 1890 telephone court, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89117. My house is one block away from this location, and last seven years... My house is one block away from this location, and last seven years I've been following this property. It's been vacant approximately seven, eight years. Now it's under new ownership, and it's been remodeled. Every morning, I go to work about 4:30, 5 o'clock. I go around the property. There's always homeless people sleep over there, and causing problems with, always with the neighbors. And I like to bring jobs in this building, create modern, upscale body shop, and I am a technician. I have 15 years of experience here in Las Vegas, 25 years in the United States, and 30 years in my life experience. I wanna have new generation involved, teach the younger generation how to make dollar in this industry. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Sir, do you wish to be heard?
My name is Max Hirsch. I'm the general contractor. I specialize in building auto body shops. I've done a lot of facilities here in Las Vegas over the last 40 years. This facility is, the building itself is well insulated. There would be no sound coming from the interior of the building to the exterior at all. The design of this with the single entry at the back of the property there, really makes it more pleasing to the surrounding industry and properties there, because all the traffic would be coming into the back of the building instead of along the sides or the front of it. So there's no public view. From the street, you won't see anything at all. Nothing is happening other than vehicle, repaired vehicles parked, or customers parked.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Public comment is open now. Any members of the public that wish to be heard, please approach the microphones, state your name and address.
Yes, my name is Alex Balsidos. I live at 9049 Pearl Cotton Avenue in Las Vegas. I've been here about four years now. My specialty is an auto body expert. I'm going to be working for Jacob as his office manager and collision repair expert. One of the things that I understand about body shops, and sometimes people look, drive by them, and you see cars piled up outside, that will not happen there. If there may be an occasional car that may have to be left outside because we just can't move it, it will be covered, because I understand that people don't wanna look at junk cars. So I'm gonna be working close with Jacob. We wanna make sure we do quality repairs on quality cars, and I've been by the building. It's been vacant for a long time. It was eventually, it was set up as a body shop at one time. The cars are, there's 121 spaces. There won't be 121 cars out there. It's not gonna happen. Most of the parking will be inside. Most of the work, all the work will be done inside. So people won't have to listen to somebody hammering on a car outside, and it won't be going on at night.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to be heard? Good evening.
Good evening. Attorney Margot Chernoshevich, Las Vegas, Nevada. Address is 10317 Wellside Hill Avenue, 89145. I know Jacob because he fixed my car about two years ago, and basically made me to go back to work in no time, and so I support his project no matter where it is. But when I learned exactly where he's trying to open his shop, I became more interested because I bring my two-year-old son to daycare center right on the other side of the street from this property, and I've driven by it for the past nine months to take my son in the morning to his daycare, and I've been concerned about this particular property being vacant for so long and having all the trash and surrounding there, so having him open the body shop there or business in that area makes me feel safer for my son to go to his daycare center right next street. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is George McLean, 3347 South Highland, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89109. I'm here, I work with a company called American Automotive. We are a transport service through the country, and Jacob's expertise and his workmanship has proven that we plan on bringing a lot of our inventory. We have over 1 million cars on the streets of America here today, and just letting you know, we've been very pleased with all of his work. He's very professional. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Todd Cox. I live at 1217 Park Circle in Las Vegas. I've known Jacob for several years now, and I, and I've actually toured the facility, and I, and I can tell that the, based on his description of his plans and what he's gonna be doing, there's not gonna be a lot of traffic going in and out of the property. All of the work and all of the commotion will be taking place within the building, and he's actually walked me through and showed me, you know, this is gonna be this bay and that bay. And I know he caters to high-end customers, luxury vehicles, and so there's not gonna be, like, the high volume of traffic as much as the high-dollar of traffic, and I think it'll be, it'll really embellish the area, and I like to support it.
Thank you very much. Any other members of the public wish to be heard? Seeing none, I will close the public comment, and we'll discuss this as a planning commission. Commissioner Quinn.
Thank you. I visited the property as well as had a nice conversation with you, Mr. Boss, on the phone, and we did come to four conclusions together that would be read into the record as, as conditions. And the first one was that you agreed to plant trees to the south for any sound barriers with anything behind you, and you did agree with that as well.
Yes, we do, and per code.
Per code. And then the second thing that I caught through the backup was that little loudspeaker thing that said, oh, we're gonna have a loudspeaker, but you assured me there will be no loudspeaker, so that will be another condition. There will be no loudspeaker on that premise announcing cars coming or going.
Correct. No loudspeakers for our business, and the current one will be, you know, removed as soon as permits.
Thank you. And then the third thing is you're gonna repave and stripe the parking lot, including the handicap parking, to make sure that it's accessible for that.
It'll be striped in the handicap parking for the submitted plan.
And then I wanted to ask your owner, are you going to have one bin accessible for a van that's kinda high, like if somebody comes in with a bigger van, or, you know, like a higher bin where they can, will you fix cars that are like a van? Like a bay, what are they called? A bay, I'm sorry.
Just if it's a mid-sized van or minivan, ma'am, yes.
Okay.
But I don't wanna work on a big trucks.
Okay.
That's very high value neighborhood. I don't wanna create industrial zone over there.
Okay. So anything that was concerning to me, your architect addressed and seemed to agree with, so I'll listen to my fellow planning commissioners, and then I'll be prepared to make a motion.
Commissioner Truesdale?
Oh.
Okay. Commissioner Bowden?
Yeah, I have some circulation issues. First of all, the plant, the new plants that you plan to put in are at the south end of the property, right?
As well as to the east.
You had that map upside down, making it look like it's...
I thought I was doing the right thing, but that was not a good move.
Okay. What is the treatment of the property line at the south end?
That, the south end property line is where the trees were requested, the Aleppo pine.
Is there a fence, a block wall? What is it?
Currently, it's a block wall, as well as an access gate that belongs to, I believe it's the city, because they use, they do access this kind of super-wide alley back there.
You don't plan on using that strip for access or circulation or anything? It's strictly city property?
It's not usable. You mean behind our wa, to the south of our property?
Yes.
That is not something we're allowed to get into.
That's where most of the residents get their access.
Ah, is that right? Well, they, there was a large lock and chain on it when I went out there, and the neighbors said that, you know, every now and then they have to go do some policing, but we're not, it is not part of our property.
The existing gates that separate the front building from the rest, will they remain?
No. They will go, as well as that loudspeaker that the commissioner referred to, and a new steel gate will be installed, but that's under separate permit. After working with planning, they said, don't go there on this submittal.
Okay. When you have tow trucks accessing the site, where is the turnaround at the south end to start heading back out?
Well, they can turn around quite easily in that south end. You know, my driveways are kind of covered up with dimensions and so forth, but we do have a standard 24-foot drive, and I believe our one-way is, is extra-wide.
Is there a one-way?
Actually, no. He made me get rid of that, so we have two, two ways back there, so it's really easy to get around.
Turning radiuses?
They're, they're gonna be plenty big. I mean, basically, we're not intending to park back there, so it's kind of a wide-open. If a, if a car was parked in every spot, though, you could still turn.
I don't see a turning radius at the, at the southwest corner of that building that On one of your 24-foot travelways.
Well, if I'm going from a 24 to a 24, it's, we, you know, it's pretty standard. We could, we could make that.
Trash trucks, as well as the trucks that, tow trucks that come in?
Correct. Just speaking as an architect on that, the answer is yes. Now, if fire were to get into it when I'm permitting and ask me to do a turning radius that takes out a parking spot or two, then I would, you know, I'd probably put my protractor to it and say, all right, well...
You better bet the fire marshal was a great deal toward design.
Right. And, and those are, those are things that we'll definitely do if they're, if they're needed. In fact, I could do it right now if, it would just remove a parking spot.
You had a floor plan there of just the building. Can you show that again, that's on the overhead?
Hi, Mr. Chairman, through you. If you remove a parking spot, we'll need to strike your variance and renotice that item, and we can hold your other items in advance at this time, and we will see you in April.
I hate to do that, since...
Okay.
I mean, we went through planning on the, on the parking.
Well, this is, let me ask you a question or two on this one still. The parking on the, along the west wall?
Yes.
That's parallel parking?
Correct.
Do those spaces count toward the total?
Is that a question for staff? Commissioner?
He's looking it up, I think.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. Yeah, the, I'll just throw it in there, that we have compliant parallel spaces. It's a city standard.
All right, through you, Mr. Chairman. That is correct, that they comply with our parallel parking requirement of being 23 feet in length in order to accommodate parallel parking.
In that case, what's the remaining travelway that you have there?
It's minimum 12, but let me check the actual. We have 15.
Okay. On the other side, where you've tried to get rid of the landscaping, you already have parking that goes to the wall. There's no landscaping there now.
Correct.
But show me what, show me where your overhead doors are, whatever access you have to get into the spaces. Just that, that just on the south end?
Yeah. We have overhead doors here and here. Over here, we just have access to the offices. This travel lane is 36 feet wide, and the landscaping you spoke about on the west, this was paved over some time ago by the owner of the property, who is, my, my client is actually going to be renting his space or a tenant. So the paving is in already for this, for this property.
So you're saying you don't like to dig up asphalt to put in 3-foot of trees?
Well, I think the city standard on that side is 6 or 8 feet. It is, it's a difficult task to do, especially because what's nice about this, this border is it's already tree-lined by the office park that's here.
Yeah, so the width you have between the back end of those spaces and the front of your building slash landscaping, what's that?
It is 36 feet 8 inches.
You just don't wanna make room for landscaping on that east end?
Well, it's not so much we don't wanna make room, it's just we, we're, with the cost of construction and everything, it's a very difficult challenge for the, for the owner.
I think you caught our staff at a weak moment, because I don't like that.
We, we did provide new landscaping along the building's face.
Whoopie. All right, I pass.
Okay. Any other commissioners wish to be heard? Commissioner Slotman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, question for the applicant through you. So the site plan that you have is different than the one that I'm looking at that was originally submitted, and maybe I just didn't catch that one during your presentation. You're gonna be putting landscaping all the way down the north end of the property, which is along Charleston, all the way down the south end of the property, which is along that vacant drainage man or whatever, that little non-paved alleyway is. Is that correct?
Correct. And it was requested by the homeowners that we do these pine trees at the 10-feet-on-center.
Okay. And then directly to the east and the west of you is commercial developments?
To the west is vacant property at this time, and then there is a, yeah, our, our one or our three, whatever you call condominium, and then over, this is an office park on the, on the west.
I'm sorry to interject. Will you just flip that map so that, I feel like I need to stand on my head.
My wife always tells me I have a terrible sense of direction.
Thank you. Now it's oriented correctly for us.
Okay. Thank you. No further questions.
Mr. Quinn?
Regarding variant, oh, let's see, we're at number 31, variance 57283, I'm going to make the recommendation for approval, limiting the parking spaces from 161 to 121.
Okay, the motion is to approve item 31. Please post.
Comment.
A motion carries. Item 32.
Thank you. Regarding SUP 57286, I'm going to offer that we approve this, and is this where I add the trees?
Actually, through you, Mr. Chairman, this is where we would add the condition for no outside speakers.
Right. This is the one, no outside speakers. Deal.
Okay. Motion is to approve item 32 with the additional condition of no loudspeakers. Please vote.
Thank you.
Please post. A motion carries.
Thank you. And then regarding item 33, I'm gonna make a motion for approval of SDR 57287, where we're going to add the trees on the south side of the property.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I could offer a condition to read as all. Amended condition number six, to read as follows. A revised landscape plan shall be submitted to the planning department prior to the issuance of building permits indicating an 8-foot landscape buffer with 24-inch box trees planted 10 feet on center.
Thank you.
That sounds perfect. Thank you.
Was there also a condition about the paving and striping, or was that already a condition?
I think that was already in there.
Yeah, the handicap spaces are already compliant. The Commissioner Quinn had asked to make sure that they were, and they are compliant with city code.
Okay, thank you. The motion is to approve item 33 with amended condition six, as stated by staff. Please vote.
Thank you, Mr. Boss.
Thank you, and we enthusiastically appreciate your support.
Thank you.
Please post. That motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, items 31, 32, and 33 will be heard at the city council meeting on March 18th, 2015.
Okay, we are now on to related items 34 and 35. Item 34 is VAR 57314. The applicant is Work in Progress, 6th Street LLC, and the owner is Koshka Smith Family Trust. For possible action on a request for a variance to allow 11 parking spaces, where 37 spaces are required for an existing general office at 317 South 6th Street in Ward 3. Staff recommends denial.
Mr. Chairman, before we begin, just...
Mr. Chairman, before we begin, just wanted to state that I'll be abstaining on this item, seeing as how I constructed this project several years ago, and now that they're going through the conversion, I did kind of help them out with some of this, so therefore I'd be abstaining on this item.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Related item 35, SDR 57313, for possible action on a request for a major amendment to a previously approved plot plan review, Z0140-90, for a proposed 2,616 square foot addition to an existing 8,396 square foot office building in Ward 3. Staff recommends denial. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is proposing to convert 2,616 square feet of the interior garage area to an office work area on the first floor of the existing building. This increase in floor area represents a 31% increase from the previous approved plan, and as such requires a major amendment. The proposed variance, staff finds is self-imposed, as an alternative design could result in meeting parking requirements. As such, staff recommends denial. Please note, we have received additional letters of support since publication.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the commission. My name is John Curran, 261 Las Vegas Boulevard North, here on behalf of the applicant, Work in Progress. A little background, Work in Progress is a shared working space which functions as an entrepreneurial incubator of sorts. George here is in charge of operations there, so he's here to answer any questions going forward. What you have before you is a major amendment to a previously approved plot plan to convert approximately 2,600 square feet of garage space into an office use. Accompanying that request is a variance from the parking requirements. A few points of note on the parking front. Work in Progress has agreements in place with properties to the north and south at 601 Bridger and 333 South Sixth Street. Furthermore, there's ample parking space on the streets. Possibly worth noting, this property located at Sixth and Bridger is one block south of the Fremont East Entertainment Overlay District, which has waivers from all parking requirements. We converted some of the parking spaces to bike parking, which we found to be very popular with a lot of the members. George here has told me that approximately 80% of the members live within one mile of the property and prefer to walk or bike most of the time. I think Work in Progress operations are just better suited to this space as an office use, and your vote for approval will help promote the, meet the demand for needed space, meeting space, and, you know, help promote the entrepreneurial spirit that's going on in downtown Las Vegas. With that, I respectfully request your vote for approval, and we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you. Sir, do you wish to say anything?
No. My name is George Moncrief. I'm at 317 South Sixth Street. I work at Work in Progress. Yes, and as John was saying, a lot of our members elect to walk or bike or actually use electric vehicles in the shift fleet. I'm sure you've heard them presented up here before. And, yeah, so I really think the space requirements or the parking space requirements are a moot point, since we do have other properties in our portfolio that do provide those spaces and we have those agreements in place. So, and the garage space, we absolutely want to make it, it's basically a multipurpose space for events and workshops, classes, and we often bring a lot of STEM education initiatives in there as well, and we get them immersed in the, those folks in the CCSD school district immersed within the entrepreneurial technology startup ecosystem, and we're doing really good work over there, and we really appreciate your approval.
Thank you very much. This is now open for public comment. Does anyone wish to be heard on this item or these items? Seeing none, I will close the public comment, and we'll discuss this as commissioners. Commissioner Quinn?
Thank you. I visited this property this week because I wasn't very familiar with it, and I found it kind of fun to see that there were more bike spots filled than parking spots. And I think there were two or three cars in the lot, and I think I counted 11 bikes approximately. And the other thing I noticed were people were walking to and from wherever they were going, whether it was to lunch or home or something. And I think this is the new Las Vegas, and I think that sometimes not every code has to meet the requirement because things are changing down there. So you'll see my full support on this project, and I hope to see more of these. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Quinn. Commissioner Boner?
I could be dense, but show me the parking spaces you're trying to get approved. Levin?
So I believe there's five spaces in the rear which face the alley, and there are six spaces in the front, which includes a handicap spot. We converted some of those parking spaces to bike parking, as previously mentioned, and it would be a conversion of the garage space in the middle of the building that would be converted to an office use.
A little concerned about there being events here, and I don't think you're going to have your eventees biking through a place like this. What do you do with people that come for your events?
We've got parking agreements in place with properties to the north and south, immediately adjacent on both sides. 601 Bridger's got a lot.
And the logical question is, what if they go away and do something intense on their own?
We've also got parking lots. We control, you know, several hundred parking spaces in private lots within a few blocks of this property. There's ample street parking.
So your customers are going to be walking some distance then?
Right. It's also their members. They're not, we don't typically have people coming off the streets and come into random events. It's members. It's paid members. They know what they're signing up for and paying for.
It's your dollars. Is this a private club or?
It's a membership model, much like a gym membership, but for office space.
Okay. So this shaded area on your four plan, is that like a raised stage area?
I'm looking at the site plan now.
It's in the business area of the garage you're converting?
That's the entire, the shaded, this one right here with the semicircle?
Yes.
I believe that is, I'm not entirely sure. That's the first time I saw that, actually.
That's just part of the garage space, you know?
Oh, that's where it's going to be floated. There is a little bit of a lip to that interior door going from the garage to the main building, and the concrete just needs to be floated to become ADA compliant, if I recall correctly.
Can you read the plan detail? Read what that number says? The spec that goes with that area?
Through you, Chairman. It's keynote number one says, "Concrete overlay slope at 1 to 50 max to transition with existing."
Okay. There is a second. Is staff comfortable with this? The meeting type use is something that fits with this or?
Well, if they're, the zoning is C1, so if their proposal is to do something like Meet Las Vegas, that would be allowed at this location. I don't know if the applicants, I think the applicant should answer the question on what type of meetings they were referencing.
I mean, I know what you're bringing before us. I mean, you're bringing this model, and it's cute little buzzwords, and it's a nice little feel-good, and it's great, but we have to communicate in a little bit more that fits our code, and I think it's incumbent on you to be able to tell us what, how many members do you envision here? I mean, is this going to be 300 members that are going to be here, and we're going to have 60 people there at any given time that nowhere, no matter how many people ride bikes, and no matter how many parking spaces you have around there, can we see this without inundating a federal building across the street or other locations? So those are the kind of questions I'd like answered.
So we've successfully operated the space for over two years. Never has this parking garage actually been used for parking. We haven't had any issues to date. They use the space for, you know, sort of, they have ping pong tables, and, you know, you want to take a break from meetings and work. You go down there and you unwind, or you can have seating for small speakers. It's a multi-use space.
But quite honestly, something's changing because you're bringing an application to us.
To formalize the conversion of a parking garage into a office use.
Yes, I believe there was a fire inspection came through, and that basically triggered us getting this up to code and getting it zoned for the usage that we actually are using it for. I believe there was a variance that was put in place beforehand for our temporary use, and we just want to solidify that. And to answer your question about whether or not we're actually trying to become something like Meet, that is absolutely not the case. All of the events, they're not grand events. They're essentially meetups between like-minded entrepreneurs and round tables and speaker sessions as opposed to grand conferences or anything like that. So, and most of the attendees are downtown residents, which don't, still, again, doesn't necessarily require that much additional parking space anyways.
Anything else, Commissioner?
No.
Anything else, Commissioner?
No, just a quick.
Commissioner, go ahead.
What's your current membership now?
Right now, we have 120 paying members, but much like a gym membership, not everyone shows up. We probably have about 40 and 50, between 40 and 50 people there at any given day of the week.
So let me ask staff. Do we have any on-record reports or anything of overproliferation of parking in the neighborhood, typically loud noise or anything in that neighborhood that could be happening since this membership has been taking place?
We're checking right now, but I don't believe we have any code enforcement issues regarded to that, to those requests. We are checking for that fire inspection to see what it indicated.
Okay. So, yeah, and I think just, I think this is typically what's happening to downtown as it's transitioning, and so I know just most recently, I think this morning, I read about the Silverstream trailers and the small houses and the uniqueness that's going on downtown. So I could support it. I don't think it's going to overpark itself at any time. I think clearly we see the smaller vehicle, the smaller car in the downtown area, whether it be electric or all the way down to the size of those little six or eight-seater golf carts that are running around, and the electric car is coming in and the foot traffic is coming in. So I kind of applaud your effort for what the big vision of downtown is, and I think I could support that wholeheartedly. And I think you guys, you're men of your word. You have been since you've proposed projects, so I can support that.
Thanks, Commissioner. Let me just weigh in on this. I also think it's forward-thinking. You know, we've scratched our heads a little bit because this is a little bit of a strange request for us, but considering what you're doing there, you're, you know, who's coming in. Love the idea of people, so many people riding their bikes instead of, you know, driving and walking to come in, and so I think you are five or 10 years ahead of time. I hope we see more of this downtown, and you'll see my support on this. Commissioner Quinn?
Thank you. With that, I'm ready to make a motion regarding item number 34, variance 57314. I'd like to make a motion for approval.
Motion is for approval of item 34. Please vote. Please post. That motion carries.
Thank you. Regarding item number 35, SDR 57313, I would like to make a motion for approval, adding one condition. I think because this is such forward-thinking, I would like to put a one-year staff, maybe an administrative review, so we can come back and take a look and see how good it's going, or what we can tweak to make it better, or maybe shut you down. I don't think so. But I just think because it's so fast and it's so new, I think it would be fair to the city for us to come back and take a look at it, make sure it's working for everybody. So that would be my recommendation. Thank you.
And does the applicant agree to that condition?
Yes.
Okay. Motion is to approve item 35 with the added condition of an administrative review in one year. Please vote. Please post. That motion carries, noting Commissioner Slotman's abstention.
Mr. Chairman, items 34 and 35 are final action unless appealed to the city clerks within 10 days.
Okay, thank you. We're now at item 38. SUP 57034. The applicant is Kevin Plenser. The owner is Oakbrook Realty Investments 2, LLC. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed 614-square-foot tavern limited establishment use within a portion of 321 South Casino Center Boulevard in Ward 3. Staff recommends approval. We have the staff report, please.
The establishment is made up of approximately 614 square feet of gross floor area. The applicant has indicated that the proposed establishment will have a courtroom theme. Staff recommends approval. Please note, we have received additional letters of support since publication.
Thank you. Good evening, sir. Your name and address?
Hi, Kevin Plenser, Oakbrook Realty, 321 South Casino Center, Las Vegas, Nevada.
Want to tell us a little bit about you?
Yeah. We call our building an urban mall. It's the first-floor retail of an eight-story parking garage. We have a food court in there with four restaurants. We have some law offices, wedding chapel. The food service seem to feel that they're doing a very good business there, but if we move a bar in, anything that'll increase their business is to their benefit. I've talked to people that work at the courthouse and attorneys, and they'd like to see something, an establishment that they can go to, you know, with that type of effect.
Very good. Thank you.
Any questions or comments?
I'll open this for public comment, and we'll see. Any members of the public wish to speak for or against this item? Seeing none, I will close the public comment. Commissioners? How about a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I don't have any issue with this being, and the location that it's at seems appropriate, so seeing as there's no other comments, I'm ready to make a motion on item 38, SUP 57034. The motion would be to follow staff's recommendation of approval, subject to all staff conditions.
Motion is to approve item 38. Please vote. Post? Item 38, the motion to approve item 38 carries.
Mr. Chairman, this item is final action unless appealed to the city clerk's office within 10 days.
Thank you. Good evening. Item 39, SUP 57101. The applicant is Money Tree, Inc. The owner is Rainbow Vista, LLC, at AL, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed 3,644-square-foot auto title loan use in conjunction with an existing financial institution specified with waivers to allow 60-foot distance separation from a residentially-zoned property where 200 feet is required, and a 113-foot distance separation from an existing similar use where 1,000 feet is required at 6,700 West Charleston Boulevard, Suite A, in Ward 1. Staff recommends approval. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, staff recommends approval of the requested special use permit accompanying waivers, as the proposed auto title loan use is similar in nature and intensity to the existing financial institute's specified use at this location, therefore can be conducted in a manner that is harmonious and compatible with surrounding land uses. Please note that additional letters of protest have been received after the publishing. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Jennifer Roberts of Duane Morris, 100 North City Parkway, appearing on behalf of the applicant, Money Tree. This is an application for a special use permit to allow the addition of a product for auto title loan use to an existing Money Tree location. There's going to be no change to the square footage, no modification to the interior. It's simply just adding a new product to its existing business. In fact, we are modifying the hours of operation to comply with what's required of auto title loan. It was 24 hours, and now we're going to modify those to 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. Staff has recommended approval, so we ask that you'd follow staff's recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll open this for public comment. Does anyone wish to be heard on this item? Seeing none, we'll open this for discussion amongst the planning commissioners. Commissioner Quinn.
Thank you. If no one else has anything to say on this, because the location is the same and you're just adding the use within the same use, I'm going to follow staff's recommendation this evening for approval of SUP 57101. Thank you.
And was that a motion? I'm sorry, I was speaking to Commissioner.
A motion for approval, yes.
All right. Motion is to approve item 39.
And I believe that can be final action. Is that correct, Doug?
Yes.
Yes, final action. Thank you very much.
Please vote and post. And that motion carries. Item 39 is approved.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, item 39 is final action unless appealed to the city clerk's office within 10 days.
Have good evening.
Thank you. Good evening. Item 40, SUP 57312. The applicant owner is 1,000 Fremont LLC. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed 2,278-square-foot beer wine cooler on-sale establishment use with a 67-square-foot outdoor seating area at 1020 Fremont Street, Suite 120, in Ward Three, staff recommends approval. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, before we begin, this establishment's owned by Natalie Young, who also owns Eat and considering on built Eat for and will be building this restaurant for, I'll be abstaining on this matter.
Okay, thank you. Staff report.
Mr. Chairman, the proposed beer wine cooler on-sale use adheres to all minimum special use permit requirements as outlined by Title 19.12 and is not located within 400 feet of any protected uses. In addition, staff has added a condition of approval requiring the business conform to the provisions of Las Vegas Municipal Code, Chapter 6.50 with regards to alcohol license. As such, it has been determined that the proposed beer wine cooler on-sale use can be conducted in a manner that is compatible with the surrounding land uses. Therefore, staff is recommending approval. Please note that additional letters of protest and support have been received after the publishing. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Chairman John Curran, 261 Las Vegas Boulevard North here on behalf of the applicant. We're really excited about this new restaurant coming soon to Fremont East. As Commissioner Slotman mentioned, it is with Natalie Young from Eat. This will be sort of focused on more fried chicken and Chinese food, which is a big need in the growing culinary dining scene downtown. We appreciate staff's recommendation for approval. We agree that this use is harmonious and compatible with existing and surrounding land uses. This use does not change any of the history or culture of downtown. As you guys know, Fremont Street has, since the inception of Las Vegas, it's been the, one of the primary commercial corridors in town. So, with that, thanks to staff again for their recommendation for approval, and we respectfully request the same from commission.
Thanks, Mr. Curran. This item is open for public comment. Does anyone wish to be heard? Please approach the microphone and state your name and address.
Hi, Doug DeMacy, 208 North Ninth. We had a little neighborhood meeting on the subject and we prepared a similar document that was put on the Ferguson next door. I have copies of that. I've made one for each planner, and then I'd like to submit one to the clerk. I don't know if...
Thank you.
If that's possible.
You bet.
We have some noise concerns. I mean, we actually, the consensus of the group was, we support the item. It seems like a good place for a restaurant, you know, doesn't look as though they're going to have an outdoor venue there, but the property itself is much larger than the restaurant. So, we have concerns and we would just like to see that item, it's item nine added, it's a noise restriction, and that they can't come back later and ask for an exemption to it. And then I have some other folks here from the surrounding church, churches. Thank you.
Pastor Joel DeMaye, I'm at St. Christiana, 901 East Stewart, Las Vegas, 89101. Also requesting this item be added.
Thank you, sir. Name and address.
Yes, Bishop William R. Jones, 9715 Phoenician Avenue, Las Vegas, Nevada. Pastor of New Life Christian Center, 1229 East Carson Street, Carson and 13th Street. We're concerned with the noise level that has been a problem in the past in the downtown area with the citizens and the surrounding individuals. And so, we're not opposed to the restaurant. We're just concerned about the outdoor stage and we're recommending and asking that this attachment be a part of the outdoor stage. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wish to be heard on this? I'm going to ask our city attorney, you may not have this in front of you, but the proposed condition for the applicant is that the business shall at all times conform with Section 9.16.030K without seeking or obtaining any exemption. I don't know if we can ask the applicant to waive the right to seek an exemption.
Yeah, they would be, Chairman, they would be subject to LVMC 9.16030K. Anyway, that's part of the conditions. I'm sure that they adhere to all city regulations. The part about no exemptions, that'd be a little bit difficult for us to enforce, especially if the property's sold at some point in time. So, you can pipe at the first part, but the second part may be a little troubling.
Is this, am I correct through you, Chairman, that this is a condition that the Ferguson agreed to?
That's correction.
There's three SUPs at the Ferguson for limited tavern licenses. The building in the rear has that exact verbiage added to it?
Is this the same ownership? It is the same ownership. I don't see why it'd be, we would be burdening the property any greater or less.
For the record, we intend to, you know, try to put that same restriction on everything they do on the corner. We've had some difficulties with the particular applicant.
Right. But like I say, they have agreed to it in the past, so it's already of record. It's a, so if that's the case, I see nothing wrong with the condition.
Does the applicant agree to the condition?
I guess I'm also concerned about the no exceptions portion and...
Mr. Chairman, if I could, Commissioner Slotman, even though he's abstained from the item, does have some factual information that doesn't promote nor oppose the item, but just so if he could maybe say one thing.
Mr. Chairman, for you, John, could you explain about the stage, no stage?
Oh, yes. So, by all means, we fully intend to operate within the conditions, within the legal code. There is no sort of stage here. We're talking about a 67-square-foot outdoor patio. Really, I think there's just going to be room for two seats. The architect on site is here if we, if you have clarification there, but there won't be any sort of live music. This is a restaurant which plans to operate as such.
Can I address the chair, sir?
Do you have a comment?
Yes.
Sure.
Well, our concern is that the property's considerably larger than they're showing here. There's several other buildings. It seems like the back half of it could be a natural for, you know, open-air music. And then we've had difficulties with the applicant and we have concerns about, I know it isn't up before us today, but the project across the street, I believe it's called The Windmill, appears to be under full-blown construction, even though to our knowledge, there hasn't been SUPs issued to it yet.
Yeah, we're just going to focus on what's on this one today.
Yeah, on this one, but the issue is more broader than this specific little restaurant. We, like I say, we all kind of like the idea of the restaurant. Seems like a good fit, you know, the Eat has good food and I'm sure this will too. We just want to make sure that these restrictions go on what the applicant does near our properties because of difficulties over the life. It's a beautiful concert and everything the DDP has actually done. The Cube was a great burden on us. So, it's, anything that they do on this site or what they call the llama lot, we have great concerns about.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not sure if I did so already, but I'll now close the public comment portion and we'll discuss this.
And again, Chairman, I understand the neighbors' concerns and if this wasn't something that had previously been agreed to on adjoining properties by the applicant, I think it's consistent. So, I don't think the neighbors are coming up here with a new argument. They're just saying, how do we get everybody to, you know, commit to protect the integrity of the neighborhood around there? And I don't see where this puts an undue burden on the property.
Through you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Quinn.
Mr. Curran, what are the hours of operation for this new restaurant?
Not entirely sure. I know it'll be open for lunch and dinner. I do not believe that it's intended to stay open late at night. Again, there's not going to be any sort of outdoor concert. I believe I understand what Mr. DeMacy is concerned about. This restaurant is part of a bigger parcel with a large open space in the back, but of course, we're not here discussing that. We're only talking about this, this space that's highlighted in front of you.
But it is a portion of an overall parcel, right?
This is one portion of a bigger parcel, yes.
Mr. Chairman? Brian down here. And I'm assuming that, you know, this condition talks about not obtaining any exemptions. I'm assuming that any exemption or any change to the existing condition would have to come back before this commission as well as the city council in order to get that exemption that the neighbors are so concerned about. And they would be notified, I'm assuming, at that, at that time as well. Maybe the, I don't know if the planning department can confirm that.
Our concern is, would that affect this entire lot for special events? Special events are exempt from the noise ordinance pursuant to the code. Would the applicant be willing to forego any special events on this lot as part of the application?
I do not think we'd like to forego that. Again, you know, there's this talk of what happens down the road in the future, you know. I just don't think we can agree to no exemptions, period. But again, we fully intend to operate within constraints of the law and I believe that the intent of that condition is...
So, I think the neighbors are pretty well right to ask for this because you're saying right now it's, it's, they're going to be burdened with those same problems that on an adjacent property you've agreed to. I, why, I guess we're splitting hairs and now staff doesn't, or city doesn't want to, you know, enforce this on one single lot. I guess what's our change? I didn't have anything to do with the agreement previously and, but I take it the property owner did? I mean, you're, you stated on the record the property owner did.
Right, and I guess I don't remember any mention of this no exemptions. We agreed to affirm that we plan on operating legally, obeying the noise ordinance, and we fully intend to do so here. I just worry about, you know, saying no exemptions forever.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. City Attorney, would this be an appropriate time as well to put a one-year administrative review on something like this? Because again, it's new. We don't know. And we hope it works out for everybody, but if in fact, I prefer having somebody check on it.
Yes, I would, Commissioner.
Thank you.
I guess I'm still not sure whether the applicant has agreed to the proposed condition that's been read into the record. And I think if we cleared that up first...
And I guess I'm a little confused as to when the prior exemptions took place. I wasn't aware of those and I'm not sure if they exist in a private agreement with the neighbors or if that was something that you as a commission and the city council placed on the previous adjacent properties.
Mr. DeMacy, do you know the answer to that?
I do. It was at city council where it was placed on it. It was agreed upon in a public, in a public neighborhood meeting where the mayor was present, and then it was later put on at city council. You know, I'm okay with today. I think as a group, we're okay. You know, Mr. Curran has issues about agreeing to it. That makes sense to me. We're at a planning level here. We're not at the city council. So, couldn't it be decided as a term at city council? Because, I mean, we intend to show up for the item at city council. My intent today was just to submit it as this is what we came up with.
If you want it, we should put it on the, on the item today.
I would like it on the item today, but if Mr. Curran...
And the city council can get rid of it if they want to, but if you don't want it, then you don't want it.
No, we want it. We want it.
I'll save my arguments.
No, no, no. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, to just remind you...
Through the chair, I apologize.
The applicant doesn't have to agree to every condition you place. You can place whatever condition you'd like to make sure that it doesn't impair the other properties adjacent. And it may be in the meantime between council, between this meeting and council, planning and research whether that condition was placed on the adjacent, because I don't remember the condition at all, so.
Okay.
The item was brought back at the end of the day, on the day that it was. The item had to be brought back on that day and it was brought back that afternoon. And the condition, council was there. I believe his name was Alan Lichtenstein, who prepared that document and then got it put on the city council that day too.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Okay, I think we've talked this one through. Does someone want to make a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Of course you will.
Of course I will. Go ahead, Rick.
No, I'm fine. I'm very fine.
I'm going to make a motion for SUP 57312 to be approved tonight with a one-year condition for an administrative review.
Okay, the motion is to approve item 40 with the additional condition of an administrative review in one year.
I guess I need to raise the issue. And so, without this condition regarding the exemption?
I'm sorry?
It's without, with or without this, this condition, the neighbors proposed with regard to the exemption?
I would say with it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so with two conditions, the one-year administrative review and the proposed condition nine or amended condition, which states that the business shall at all times conform with Section 9.16.030K without seeking or obtaining any exemption. Please vote. Please post. That motion carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, item 40 will be heard at the city council meeting on, I'm sorry, March 18th, 2015.
Item 41, SUP 57340. The applicant is Dollar Loan Center and the owner is Lakes Plaza LLC. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed 1,531-square-foot auto title loan use with waivers to allow a zero-foot distance separation from a residentially-zoned property where 200 feet is required and a 242-foot distance separation from an existing similar use where 1,000 feet is required at 9101 West Sahara, Suite, West Sahara Avenue, Suite 100, in Ward Two, Councilman Beers. Staff recommends denial. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the proposed location of this use fails to comply with the minimum distance separation requirements for the requested special use permit. The distance from the subject fee interest parcel is zero feet from a residential zone property and 242 feet from a similar use. These waivers represent 100% and a 74% distance reduction from Title 19, respectively. As such, the required waivers reinforce the unsuitability of this site for the auto title loan use with the surrounding land uses. Therefore, staff recommends denial of this request. Please note that additional letters of protest and support have been received after the publishing. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Dave Galyon, Dollar Loan Center, 8860 West Sunset Road. On this particular project, it has a certain special circumstance to it. This large parcel that the distance requirements are being based on encompasses 12 individual parcels. The parcel that we're looking to do is the little black squared-out area within this picture that they're displaying. When we initially brought in our application and based on code, we based the distance requirements off of the individual parcel as, as we always have. Based on that parcel, it's 242 feet to residential and 1,182 feet to the similar company, meeting the distance requirements. Taking a little bit further in the exhibits that I presented within the justification letter shows that even with residential, for anybody to get to this new establishment, it's roughly 2,400 feet for any pedestrian to get from a residence over to the actual property. With that said, and based in other approvals that we received, being that it is an individual parcel, we do feel that it should be considered as such as opposed to the, the overall commercial shopping center that the distances are being based on. And to add one more thing, as of today before coming in, I just wanted to take a look based on some of the customers' reactions when we talked about opening up a new company form over here. Just in one square mile of this, we currently have 1,780 active and paid-in-full customers that would be excited to have something close to home as opposed to drive... as opposed to driving the current five miles, five to seven, based on the location they're going to, to be able to continue to do business with us. I could answer any other questions you may have and...
Thank you very much. This is now open for public comment. Does anyone wish to be heard? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment and we'll open this for discussion amongst the planning commission. Commissioner Bonar, anything from you?
If I heard you right, even with your kind of calculations, you still don't meet the max distance separation from a similar use.
Yeah, the similar use distance requirements is 1,000 feet. From parcel to parcel with the similar company would be 1,182 feet.
So you don't meet it.
Yeah, we meet it by 182 feet.
You do from specific door to door.
From specific parcel line.
Not parcel, but parcel.
Well...
So then I'll ask the staff, is it meant to be parcel by parcel or is it door to door?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. The distance separations are drawn from the parcel. This parcel is actually a commercial subdivision, which is the fee interest parcel. The parcels that he's referring to are actually recorded through a meets and bounds survey is recorded to the assessor just to create an assessor's parcel and the actual distance separations from the edge of the commercial subdivision.
Well, I have a summary after these other questions.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Will you turn your mic on? Oh, is your mic on, Commissioner? I couldn't hear what you were saying.
He was just indicating he'd just follow up with a summary after you spoke.
Does anyone else have any questions? All right, let's hear your summary.
With the number of these items that come before us, and I haven't been on the commission all that long, I'm amazed that there's so many of them. That's the reason there's distance separations, whether it's from a residence that you've got to walk around to get to it or whether it's from a use of a similar type. If I had my way, I'd find a spot out in the rural county where you could put all of these in one place and no one would have to have this kind of hearing for a use like this that sullies a certain portion of our community. Because you don't meet the best distance separations proposed by the book, I recommend denial of item SUP 57340, just plain denial.
All right, the motion on item 41 is to follow staff's recommendation for denial. Keep in mind, a yes vote is for denial. Please vote. Please post. Motion for denial carries. Item 41 is denied.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, item 41 will be heard at the March 18th, 2015 city council meeting.
Okay, the last public hearing item is item 42, SDR 57096. The applicant owner is East Charleston Twist LLC for possible action on a request for a major amendment to a previously approved site development plan review for a proposed 914 square foot expansion to an existing 797 square foot restaurant building with waivers of perimeter landscape buffer standards to allow a zero-foot wide buffer along the west perimeter and a 10-foot wide buffer along the north perimeter where 15 feet is the minimum required and zero-foot wide buffers along the portions of the south and east property lines where eight feet is the minimum required at 1,900 East Charleston Boulevard in Ward 3. Staff recommends approval. Can we please have the staff report?
Mr. Chairman, before we begin, just wanted to make a disclosure that I live within the notification area. However, this won't affect me any greater or lesser than anyone else who lives within that notification area, and my independence of judgment won't be affected, so I'll be commenting and voting on this item.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Staff report?
Mr. Chairman, the proposed 914 square foot expansion represents a 114% increase from the original approval. Therefore, a major amendment to the previously approved plot plan review is required. This project requires waivers from sections of the perimeter landscape buffers as well as exceptions from the lack of parking lot landscaping materials. The existing vacant restaurant building is in disrepair and contributes to urban blight in the area. This project will greatly improve the safety and overall aesthetics of the area and is consistent with the policy 2.1.1 of the Las Vegas 2020 master plan. Therefore, staff recommends approval with conditions. Please note that additional letters of protest and support have been received after the publishing. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Alan Perlmutter, 7975 West Sahara, 89117. And I'm with David Meldrum.
Dave Meldrum, 285 Ferry Woods Drive.
And we're the developer and Dave is the operator of the Checkers Restaurant. And we agree with staff. And the only other thing I would mention is that existing is a patio that's covered that is not enclosed or conditioned. And so that square footage is there, wasn't counted as part of the building. So what we're doing is taking the seating area and moving it up against the building, air conditioning it and bringing it, everything up to current standards.
Okay, thank you. This is now open for public comment. Does anyone wish to be heard on item 42? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment and open this for discussion with the commission. Commissioner Bonar? No?
I'm sorry, my...
Okay. Commissioner Schlotman?
Yeah, I drive by this area all the time. This is in my neighborhood. And, you know, the more places, restaurant, retail, that we can get built and buildings remodeled on this little strip on Charleston, the happier I think I'll be and all the other neighbors that live in that area will be. And I mean, this building is in horrible condition right now. And I think Steph said it right, urban blight. And so I could fully support this. And I'll just see if anybody else has any comments.
Commissioner Truesdale?
If I understand your plan correctly, on the west side, that's all existing parking, right?
Yes.
And existing landscaping, the way it is?
We're actually adding some landscaping to what's there.
Okay, but you're adding your building on that west side or to the east side?
On the east side, the building exists and we're expanding it by adding that portion that's in white on there.
Okay.
Kind of crosshatched as well. And it's right now, it's just simply a drive-through. It was a double drive-through. Now we're adding an enclosed dining area.
It just appears to me that you could meet a reasonable, you know, some landscaping along that east side, which would kind of at least add some interest to that that side, which would provide an enhancement to the area. I mean, I understand, you know, it's a blighted area, but we're not going to change the blight by not asking for some improvements to the area. So unless I'm looking at your plan wrong, I don't see where that would create a detriment to the plan.
Well, that's simply a drive on the east side.
I guess the question is, would that impede the flow of traffic that wanted to get around the drive-through traffic?
Parking there, which uses that drive on that side. So if we were to put landscaping along there, it would probably not allow room for that driveway.
We've added landscaping on the other three sides, as you can see.
Yeah, but you've got a dotted area there where you could actually add some landscaping. I mean, you could add a few...
We could...
Curbing and some trees and...
We could put a couple shrubs in that one area.
It's up to the commission what they feel.
Mr. Chairman, if I may ask a question. And what area are you talking about? You can add a location. Is it...
Back near the dumpster in the lower right-hand corner, if you will. I don't know.
So all the way through that dashed?
In that dashed area alongside the drive-through.
So basically going from the corner of the dumpster, following that dash line, curving back up?
We could put some rock and landscaping in there.
Okay, how about a motion?
So, Mr. Chairman, on item number 42, SDR 57096, I would move to follow Steph's recommendation, subject to all conditions, and ask applicant if they are willing to accept an additional condition stating from the corner of the dumpster going through the hash line as indicated on your site plan to add some sort of landscaping, shrubs, rocks along that area.
That'd be acceptable.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Planning would like to add, subject to the approval by the fire department, we're concerned that we'll no longer have 360-degree access by the fire department, and they may not approve that.
Okay, subject to the fire department.
Okay, the motion is for approval of item 42, subject to the additional condition. Please vote. And please post. That motion carries. Item 42 is approved.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, item 42 is final action unless appealed to the city council within 10 days. I'm sorry, the city clerk, unless appealed to city clerk within 10 days.
Okay, we're now on to the director's business portion of the agenda. Item 45, TXT 57574. The applicant owner is the city of Las Vegas. This is for discussion and possible action on a request to update the Symphony Park design standards to provide for an alternative review process and development criteria for multi-block projects within Symphony Park and to provide for other related matters. This is in Ward 5, and staff recommends approval. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the Symphony Park plan was plotted out on a block-by-block basis. Part of the development plan, the community is meant to be highly walkable. As such, standards for projects anticipated to encompass more than one of the designated development parcels was not addressed under the current design standards. Proposed amendment will introduce an addendum that will provide a base standard for projects to meet certain criteria. Those criteria are a 70% frontage is required, which is much similar to what's required throughout the downtown Centennial Plan. Streetscape improvements will adhere to the standards of Section 2 of the Symphony Park schematic streetscape design standards. Pedestrian open spaces and plazas shall be integral to the overall design of the proposed development. Surface parking areas will be located away from street frontages and shall not be permitted on street corners. In order to do the multi-block development, it is recommended that that process be similar to the CV process for approving development standards in the civic zoning district. Those zoning standards are approved through a site plan review as a public hearing, and this would mimic that process. In addition, this text amendment also cleans up the language in regards to permitted uses in the terms of taverns and references it now to a tavern limited and supper club is also been changed to restaurant with alcohol. And that's consistent with the ordinances that were approved by council in 2013.
Are there any questions? I'll be happy to answer them.
Okay, thanks. This item is open for public comment. I think they've all left for the evening, so I'll close the public comment and open this for discussion with the planning commission. Commissioner Goins?
So I guess I got just a couple of questions because I remember during the January meeting, we had a text amendment on, correct?
That is correct. There was a text amendment for Symphony Park to add the outdoor commercial amusement, which was a cleanup item. The use of that location was already contemplated in the downtown Centennial Plan and also within the Grand Central Parkway District. There's a stadium would be a permitted use, and that would bring Symphony Park in alignment with Title 19 for the definition of an outdoor.
So that, and if I recall, that text amendment did not pass. But did it go on the city council and what happened with it?
It has gone on the city council and it's being heard on, I believe it's being referred to recommending committee at the next recommending committee meeting and due for adoption February 18th of this year.
Okay. So as I read this one, and it talks about providing for an alternative review process and development criteria, what's the current review process now?
The current review process requires a review by the Symphony Park Design Committee. That would still be required here. That alternative process would be to move through as a civic zoning district through a site plan review, but the design review committee would still review that site plan. It just doesn't, it comes through a different process, slightly different.
Okay, I guess my, so it also mentions that there is some development criteria. So what are the changes in the development criteria then?
Well, the Symphony Park standards were designed for a block item. And a multi-block project can't meet those requirements specifically. What it does is it, we still get the intent of the code of the plan in requiring a 70% built-to-land, the streetscape improvements, but each block in Symphony Park is specific to its design and its uses.
So can, is that one, so that's how you're defining multi-block? But can you then skip a block and then pick it back up? Skip a block and pick it back up? Or how are you defining?
No, it has to be a continuous group of blocks. You couldn't, if you skip blocks, that wouldn't be a multi-block project pursuant to this.
Gotcha. Okay.
They do have to be a continuous.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else wish to be heard on this? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Well, Mr. Chairman, to me, this is still kind of vague from a text amendment. It's not very detailed. I would like to know a little bit more. I don't feel comfortable supporting it, so my recommendation at this point is going to be for denial.
Okay, the motion is for denial of item 45. Please vote, noting that a yes vote is for denial. Please post. That motion does not carry and therefore will go on to city council with no recommendation from planning commission.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Yes, Mr. Chairman, item 45 will be forwarded to city council in ordinance form.
Okay, very good. Moving on to citizens' participation. Citizens' participation. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the planning commission. No subject may be acted upon by the planning commission unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium and give your name for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time any single speaker is allowed, may be limited. Does anyone wish to be heard? Seeing none, I will close public comment and planning commission comment, and this meeting is adjourned.